Bring this meeting to order for a budget study session, so the floor is yours, Sandy.
Okay. So in front of you, I've placed a, it's a draft of the budget, yes, Connie is modeling it very nicely. And we spoke last Tuesday about really pages one, two, and three, and four, and five, and six, so I want us to jump all the way up to page 11. And we'll talk tonight, in our 30 minutes we have tonight, about the other funds besides the general fund. Unless anybody wants to do anything differently. Are you good with going through the other funds? And then obviously, we'll meet again in two weeks, probably come back and talk about the general fund.
Obviously, this hasn't reflected the changes that we want to see here in the future.
No, this is exactly the same thing I had on Tuesday. I don't think all the changes are done so that I can put them in here yet, so, but the other funds are probably pretty close to being formed.
Well, there's quite a bit of things that we need to look at, like contracts, programs, stuff like that for budget cuts, that we need to look at before we finalize anything.
So, we probably need to think about then some additional time, and how to work through that, so that, and what the tools and resources are that you need, so that we can do that. Because the draft technically is in the board's hands by the end of May, and so that is two more meetings that are scheduled as of right now.
I thought I made that comment at our last meeting, that we needed to make some adjustments, and this was not a true vision of what our exact numbers are.
You did. You had said you thought there was some excess spending.
There is.
And I had shared that I am working with the superintendent on that, and so he can probably provide more details on that, but at this point, I don't have that data to present today. So, that's why we'll talk about the, starting at the risk management fund and the other funds, and work our way back to the general fund, and hopefully, we'll have some of that information. If we need to have some meeting around programs and contracts, we probably should talk about that, and what the data is that we need, so that if it's me or anybody else, we're prepared properly to have a proper conversation.
I, and I'm not speaking for the board, I'm speaking for myself, I would like to see all the contracts that we have out right now, every contract.
So, we can do that. Many of them will expire here at June 30th.
Right, but we're gonna have to renew some of them.
Some of them will need to renew. It would be almost impossible for me to guess what those are.
Right.
And many of them, if they're over $15,000, come towards this board, so, those are some of those pieces, yeah.
But we have some difficult choices to make, based on how much money we're going to be getting or not getting, and how much the, how much we're expending, or spending every month. So, I would like to see that, I don't know if any other board member would like to see that, how much money we're putting towards programs that we may or may not need.
Okay, let's get back on task, because I want to get done it.
Six fifteen is our goal.
Six fifteen, because I don't want to start the meeting.
So, I will start at six, I will stop at six fifteen, no matter where we're at, given we were gonna do 30 minutes, and then, as a board, you're gonna need to add additional time to dive deeper into the budget, so, and we can do that. All right, so let's start on page 11. And 11 and 12 represent our risk management fund, and this is a sub-fund of the general fund, which just means, in the audit, it's reported as a general fund, but in the budget, we adopt it as a sub-fund, because it's separate, and it, this is where we pay for our liability, property, workers' comp, and any claims uninsured from. And so, on page 12, the far right column, actually, let me rewind how we look at this. So, on page 11, the three columns that you see on page 11 are the audited financial information for the risk management fund, for the previous three years. Then you'll see on page 12, you'll see our revised budget in the first column, you'll see an estimated actual, so this is that crystal ball guess, of where we think this fund will end at June 30th. And then you'll see just the change from, from the budget column to the 2017-18 budget. So, for next year, I believe that we will need to transfer $1,675,000 into this fund from the general fund, compared to the $1,004,25,000 that was transferred this year. And the reason why is, is because of the BOSI's claim, that potentially, we have a deductible of around $250,000, and that's per case. And so, that change was to represent one of those cases that you are aware of. We do not have our official renewal prices in yet, from the Colorado School District Self-Inurance Poll, that is where we purchase our insurance, but I expect that to go up around 5%, so I'm reflecting that here in the budget. Additionally, our insurance is going to require training of the board and all administrative staff, in order to bind us in an insurance policy for next year. Those dates aren't known yet, and once we get that, Dan Zeisler will share those with Monica, and we can get something scheduled on our calendars for that training. So, with this fund, this fund has then a fund balance of around $671,000. Since, when I spoke with you, I think it's been, well, it was two weeks ago, and we shared what our potential obligation could be, if this future claim is gonna be at BOSI's, that will come out of the insurance fund, if we have to send reserves over to BOSI's, it will eventually come back, and we can talk more about that later, when we go back to the general fund. But if we're required by the insurance commissioner to do that, our assets will just be held by a different organization, and then when everything is done, it will come back to the organization, so.
It could be a few years, though.
It could, it could be, until the insurance commissioner feels that everything is closed and stable, yeah. So, our insurance fund also represents the risk manager's salary and benefits that are reflected in there, so that, that is what represents the insurance fund. If there are no questions, I will switch to the next fund, which moves us into what's called special revenue funds. And on page 14, this just recaps each of the individual funds, so I'm gonna turn by that, and start with Nutrition Services Fund. And I'm gonna go to page 17 and 18, for Nutrition Services Fund. This fund is set up exactly the same way as risk management, where the three columns on page 17 represent audited financial statements. And then on page 18, it represents the adopted budget for this year, estimated actual for this year, and then the budget for next year. And as I shared last Tuesday, one of the challenges that we have in this fund is federal reimbursements revenue. So, we'd budgeted $3.4 million to be received this year, and I think that's gonna be closer to $3,788,000, which is $400,000 off, and that's somewhat due to a change of our practice of how we provided breakfast in the classroom. Previously, we were providing it in the classroom, and the teachers were required to do the reporting requirements, and we weren't confident that that was being done as prescribed by the Department of Education. So, breakfast is now a grab-and-go, where the students go to the cafeteria, they grab their breakfast, and they go to the classroom. That has impacted the revenue stream by about $30,000 a month. That's also impacting the bottom line, and this fund's ability to operate. So, the Food Service Fund used to be treated as if it was a business, and it's a sole, it was an enterprise fund, and so if you bought an asset, you put it on the balance sheet, and then you depreciated it over the life of that asset. Today, it's considered a government fund, and so if we were to buy an asset, steamers, we need some steamers, it hits the expense, and it's all expensed in the year you purchase it. So, the benefit from your asset is expensed while it still has benefit, is how it worked in the past. So, in this fund, you'll see there's a yellow mark in the ending fund balance on page 18. The way the budget's presented right now, unless we can reduce additional expenses, and the only place to reduce expenses is to either change the quality of the food, or to reduce our staff, they're gonna be upside down, which is illegal to do. So, we need to fix this yet, and that was part of our conversation that we had initially last week, was about the opportunity, are we interested in charging students that don't meet the free or reduced qualifications, or do we supplement this from the general fund? So, those are kind of some of the options we're throwing out there. And so, we'll need to talk more about that, and what's the desire of the board on that. Naomi did an analysis of if we just did the high school. And if we just did the high school, and we charged for free lunches, and she did a comparable of what other districts are charging, it wouldn't generate enough revenue to cover this deficit, just the high school, the kids that qualify, that do not qualify for free or reduced. So, it would have to be broader than that, and we can go furthermore, we can spend a whole 30 minutes just discussing those analyses, so I'd want us to keep going, but that's still one of those questions to be solved in our other funds at this moment. So, we turn to page two, we're gonna fast forward to the next fund, which is the Government Designated Purpose Grant Fund. And this is the fund that is where all the federal, state, and local grants are accounted for. Same concept, the first three columns that are on page 23 are the audited financial statements, and you're seeing revenue on page 23 and 24, and expenditures on 25 and 26. They're exactly the same, so no matter which sheet you look at, you'll see the same dollar amount. Page 24 has the budget for this year, what we're estimating the actual to be, and then what we're estimating 17, 18 to look like, based on what we are hearing from both the Department of Ed and the federal government on our grants. So, Title I, for example, we know that that amount is going down, and we, and carryover's not in this amount yet, because we don't know what's gonna be carryover, that is approved separately. But our allocation's estimated to be $1,092,000 for Title I. We do have some schools that have school improvement grants, specifically for that school, and not the district-wide, we're estimating that to be $125,000. Our other large one is the Title VI-B, which is our special education federal dollars that we receive, we're estimating that to be about $1,500, or excuse me, $1,454,000. And then you'll see that there's a line on it that says, "other federal grants of $2.5 million." So, we set that there as an earmark, in the event we receive any grants that we don't know about today. And every board meeting, you are accepting applying for, or, and accepting to receive. And so, this sets that appropriation level, so that when you take that action, you actually have the authority now to spend it. Even though we don't know it, we put it there until it's known, and then it gets designated for the grant, based on how the grant award was written. So, for next year, I'm estimating that we'll have a budget of around $12,600,000 in federal and state grants. You'll see the best grants on there, it's about the fifth or sixth from the bottom, that will be the completion of the Kearney Middle School. So, half of that expense is in this year's budget, the other half will be in next year, because it won't be completed by June 30th. So, that's what that best grant represents there. Are there any questions on grants, and the grant fund? So, all of these funds have restrictions that are individual and unique to each of those grant applications, and how those can be spent, and any restrictions on them from there. So, this is the 30,000-foot level of our federal grants and state grants. I'm gonna fast forward us to page 29 and 30, to the next fund, which is our Interscholastic Athletic Fund. This is the fund where we account for all of our athletic activity, and so primarily, coaches' salaries and benefits come out of here, transportation, officials, and small amounts of money for uniforms and some replacements. Graduation is also part of this, as the expenditure for the high school. First three columns are the audits for the last three years, the budget for this year, where I believe they'll end at June 30th, and then a budget for 17, 18. One of the important things to note about the athletic fund is this comes from your general fund. So, you are designating $664,000 of your general fund to support student fees and admissions, or gate receipts to events, to help support this athletic fund. So, if we put in more, that competes against other things in the classroom, in the general fund, and other areas.
Sandy.
Yes.
Question, where does the money go when the students pay their fees?
The.
Does it go back into the athletic fund, or does it go back into general fund?
It is staying here in the athletic fund, and you'll see that I'm estimating that to be $21,500 for next year. This year, I don't think we're gonna hit the budget, which was at $22,000. I think we're only gonna collect $18,600 from students for athletics this year, so that number is adjusting by $500 for next year, as those, as it changes of who participates. But that stays and helps support the athletic fund, both for, whether it's awards, banquets, equipment, uniform, and coaches. But the coaches' salaries and benefits do take up the large part of this fund. It's also supervision at games comes out of this fund. We currently have graduation at DU, and there's $30,000 budgeted in here for the graduation at DU, as well, that's been earmarked. And that, again, was a transfer from the general fund, it could stay in the general fund, and all be part of the general fund, but it allowed us to put a stronger focus on how much we invest in athletics, separate from getting lost inside the general fund.
Sandy, that $30,000, is that paid to DU, or where is that?
It's paid to DU. It's part, it's both Lester Arnold and the high school.
We're paying $30,000 for our kids to go to DU, down at DU to graduate?
That has been the cost in the previous years. I don't know, you know, you don't know the final amount until they get down there with all the labor of moving and setting up, and the transition, yep. So, a big expense in here is transportation to and from athletic events, and it's not just the high school, but our middle schools. And because many other school districts have eliminated middle school sports, they're now doing intermurals, where they're playing each other in their own district, we're having to drive further and further away, in order to find competition for our middle school. And that has had an impact on the budget, in order to cover the transportation costs to those athletic events that have happened. Obviously, we have the same thing happening at, at the high school level, but those leagues haven't changed, where over the last seven years, you've seen less and less competition at the middle school, and it becomes more and more difficult for our schools to find competitors to compete against.
And the middle school kids do not pay to play, correct? Is it just the high school kids?
I don't think so, but I don't know that off the top of my head. I'm sorry, I don't know if they do or not. Do you know, Dave, if we charge a fee for the middle school? I don't know that off the top of my head, but I'm.
Maybe we should, on transportation, I know that some of the schools in District 12, where District 12 is, if they're playing a ballgame within a seven, eight-mile radius, they allow the team to drive their cars on a Saturday. Maybe we should look at that, our Saturday ballgames, if, to save some of the cost, if it's costing us way too much. Or, put it back into the.
Yeah, and I think it's more middle school than it was high school. That is impacted greater by the mileage, because they're, they're going all the way down to the southwest side of the city, they're going all the way out to Strasburg to play, they're looking anywhere and everywhere for teams to play, and then, of course, those teams hopefully are traveling to us as well. So, it's, depends on the schedule, and half the games are away, and half the games are here, usually, on a normal schedule.
So, I mean, this is just for the athletics, but how come we're not looking to get in with DU, I mean, with DU, with Brighton, Mapleton, I mean, those are local, Thornton's, I mean, District 12, those are all local, why are we looking to go up to the mountains? And, is there a reason that?
I believe, yeah, I believe that their middle school level, they, they had, now, I know that every district, every year, re-brings back the topic, but they're only playing sports within their school district, and they're not going outside, so it's an intermural, versus.
I know over at Mapleton, they're playing Brighton.
At middle school level?
Yeah.
That would be a great question for our athletic director, because I don't, I don't know that. I repeat what I hear, and, and if that's not the case, I don't know. And maybe we do play Mapleton, I don't know.
Well, if we can look into that, or.
Sure. So, so that's at the middle school level, that's, that does create part of the challenge. Are there any questions on athletics? Okay. So, moving to page 33, is our Fee Supported Fund. And in this fund, this is the fund where we account for programs and expenditures that require a fee. Now, not all of these programs are self-sustaining, and so the general fund does support some of our programs. So, here are some of the examples of programs that are inside the Fee Supported. We have an internal print shop, that right now, where we charge our customers, which can be both internal and external. So, we do printing for the charter school in the area, we sometimes do other school districts, and we do schools and departments, and then they charge, they charge the print shop, versus using our own copiers in our buildings, because there's usually heavy volume type things, or special type print jobs, we're better going there, than even possibly going to Office Depot, or Kinko's, or things like that. So, that's one of the choices we have, is a print shop. We have our facility use, which is the facility use where community members rent our facilities, and, and we recognize the revenue here, and expenditures would be utilities, custodial fees are the common type of expenditure we would have, those types of expenses are all captured here, for those extra hours that staff puts in to help cover facility use. Another item we have in here is before and after-school daycare. So, not our enrichment, but actual child care that we have at our buildings, before and after school. So, these are programs that are not part of the 21st Century Grant, where we have enrichment and clubs, these are true daycares, where parents are dropping their children off in the morning before school for daycare services, and then picking them up at the end of school. So, this is at our elementary level, and that does get subsidized, because the fees don't cover all of the expenditures. We have adult education in this fund, where we're supporting adult education program, and this is supported by some fees, we collect about $38,000 from our adult learners, and then we do transfer from the general fund about $30,000 to support this fund, and they have some federal grants and state grants that also help support that program. And then the last thing we have is childcare at Lester Arnold, and this is the Teen Parent Program, where children, our students are bringing their babies to school while they go to school. And this used to be inside our general fund, but we do receive fees from our students to use this program, and so we've moved it out to the Fee Supported, but these were budgeted positions before in the general fund, so we're now transferring the general fund's support for these positions, so this program's accounted for in one place. And that's at about $145,000 that we transfer from the general fund, over to support the Teen Parent Program at Lester Arnold. The expenditures are mostly salaries and benefits in this fund, that are supporting the people running these programs, and so, that's what makes up our Fee Supported. We changed our policy in the facility use at the end of last year, where not all the same groups are paying anymore, and so, we are, we are no longer receiving additional money and changes in schedules, this fund may not be collecting the $28,000 that I budgeted for next year. And part of our calendaring and the contract program is charged against this, so, it's something I have to look for, to make sure that, when we rent our buildings out, if they're to our own student-type programs, they're just paying a nominal fee. But we had some big community events that aren't coming back next year, and we've had some changes in our fees, for some clubs that were paying a big portion of our revenue in this fund, that are no longer paying. So, it's something I have to keep monitoring, as we go through, and what the impact will be. For example, the wrestling club, they used to pay at the top of the pay table, because most of the wrestlers were not Adams 14 students, they were students from other districts. And that policy changed at the end of last year, that allowed them to now pay as if they were all of our students. So, their fees went from, we were collecting over $8,000 a year, to it'll be less than two or three, for right now, for the club. So, that's, that's an example. Another big user was the Drum and Bugle Corps, and I don't believe they're coming back next year to our facility. And that was a fundraiser for our sports at the high school, it was also some revenue to this fund as well. So, those, those decisions will impact how we used to operate. So, that's the Fee Supported. Let's go to the Bond Redemption Fund, which is page 39 and 40. So, this is the fund where we account for, it's almost all property taxes, that were approved by the voters to pass previous bond issues. So, this is similar to our mortgage payment, we make principal and interest payment on debt that we issued to investors several years ago. So, you can see the historical pictures on page 39, and on page 40, this year's budget, and what we're estimating for next year. We have an amortization schedule, it's already determined in the bond documents, what our principal and interest payments will be for next year. Once we know assessed valuation in December, you will set a mill levy that will be adequate to collect enough revenue to pay the principal and interest payments that are required on this fund. So, that's what this represents. I'm estimating a small increase in our assessed valuation this year, it won't be significant, which will be better than the decreases we've had in the previous years, but we won't know until we'll get our first glimpse in August, and we'll get the final assessed valuation in December. So, this will adjust in January, once we get that information. Are there any questions on the bond fund? Okay. So, on page 42, is our amortization schedule of our bonded debt, so you can take a look at what, what is still outstanding. So, as of June 30th of this year, we'll have $69 million, almost $70 million of bonds still outstanding to pay, and you'll see the payment cycle, and what year each of those are due, principal and interest. It might be important to note, on page 41, your legal debt limit. So, the state statutes describe what your maximum debt limit can be, and there are two different calculations, but one requires voter approval. So, the only one disclosed is the common one, which is 20% of your assessed valuation. So, if assessed valuation grows to $643 million, and you take 20% of that, we would have a legal debt limit of $58.8 million, which means, we could go out to our voters and ask for an additional $58 million in bonds. So, you're capped at that. The other calculation, which does require voter approval, is to do 6% of your market value, and that's the maximum you could ever go after, and that number's gonna be closer to 100 million. And so, those are the, you have to weigh the pros and cons, which way you go, if you choose to go out for a bond, because you, you know, if you go out for the maximum, you will tie up your maximum ability for a bond debt, until you pay those down. And, and what that impact will be to your property taxpayers. So, it's balancing those equations with your needs, and with the community's ability to pay. But that gives you an example of what the state limits are, on what we can go out and ask our voters for. So, the last fund, and this fund is not done, and so, it's just a skeleton right now, and there are some things that are known, and there's some things that are not. This is the Capital Reserve Fund. Again, this fund is funded from a transfer from the general fund, and so, if you don't put money here, you have more money in the general fund, if you put more money into the Cap Reserve Fund, you have less money in the general fund. So, it is solely funded by the general fund. So, for next year, we're proposing that this transfer from the general fund increase by $900,000 to $2.2 million. And I'll explain why, as we go through. So, the first item is, is we do have $3.5 million into Cap Reserve Fund. That has been earmarked, unless the board chooses differently, for the purchase of land. But that, that is the proceeds from the sale of the Rosemary property, and that has been designated that, and it can be changed, if this board chooses to do so. We will have our match on the best grant, because half of it went out this year, the other half will go out after June 30th. So, that's the $500,000 you see on the far right, in the expenditures. We have an annual commitment to the replacement of technology, that came from the mill levy of $450,000. of $450,000. And there's some carryover in that $567 or $62, that monies they don't, they didn't get spent this year will roll into next year, because of the timing of projects of when they're done and completed, and when they become this year. So now I'm guessing, because I don't know what's really going to happen by June 30th, and I'll make those right when we come back in January, but this is an estimate of what I think carryover will be. The other part is, is that we have copiers, the district copiers come out of this budget, add $200,000. And then we've designated $100,000 to go to each school for instructional equipment, and this can be desks and chairs, it can be vocational equipment, it can be music equipment, and each school gets an allocation to create some type of a replacement cycle of their equipment in their building, so that we have something. It's not much, but it's something. We used to have a replacement cycle for our bus fleet, we haven't been able to hold on to that for this school year, probably not for next year as well. And you'll see that there is a $1.2 million that's sitting there called other capital expenditures to be determined or announced. That is where we're gathering the list of needs, and so far, we have two roof projects that will take us over this million dollars. And with that said, by increasing the transfer $900,000, we're doing nothing else capital-related except for two roofs. So this, this budget's very lean, it doesn't have enough money to do all the things we need to do. Ideally, we would try to create replacement cycles, so that our vehicles aren't 15 years old and 20 years old, that we're replacing them timely. And the same with technology, 450 gets us somewhere down the road, but it's not far enough. And so that 450 goes to the infrastructures in place, and not to anything new that we would add, such as the Chromebook Initiative that has just come on board. So this, and then the last part on there is we have a lease payment of $271,000, that was an energy lease that happened at least eight years ago. And so we still have several years to make these lease payments, that are committing our, our resources to that. And that makes up the cap reserve as we see it now. So if we want to increase this, it's an additional transfer from the general fund. If you want to decrease that, it would be resources to the general fund. So that's how this fund works, and that's how the Athletic Fund works as we talk globally. So I, they're really sub-funds of the general fund. So those are our other funds besides the general fund, to give you a quick view. We need to revisit nutrition, capital, general, and any other fund that you want at future And so I heard a request for contracts, and contracts are paid from all sorts of different budgets and all sorts of different places, so I'm not sure just contracts would be helpful. Because like, when I think of contracts, I'd like, what part are coming from federal grants, what are we, you know, so I would, I would have those questions, because I ask myself that now, what parts are this or that, or...
I'd like to see all of them. It doesn't matter where we get the funding from. We have some difficult choices to make. You painted a very grim picture tonight.
Yes.
But, and all the programs that we also fund.
So, when you say programs, and that's kind of what I needed your help with a little bit, so I can make sure I bring what you're asking for. I don't have anything in my thinking that says programs, because we dole out supplies and materials to buildings based on a per-people allocation, and staffing is on a weighted allocation as well. And so when we talk about programs, if we say we don't want to do one program at a school, the way it's set up now, it would mean that program could just be reinvested into some other direction, versus creating some type of savings to come back to go into something completely different and away from the school. So that's what, I want to make sure I understand what you're asking for, so I, we're bringing what you need, because I don't have a budget that's, like, I'll just use an example, playground program. And so it's hard for me to make sure I'm bringing what you're really asking for, without asking some more questions and some help.
We can discuss after the meeting further.
Okay.
Dr. Bregel, yourself, and any other board member.
That'd be great, I'm happy to do that, so...
Just make a few comments?
Yes, sir.
For our board members, you know, our finance person has given us a lot of information, and I know that we've got decisions to make, but I want you to understand that, like, the governing board does not make the budget. You know, we're going to be making the budget, the superintendent, I'm working finance, I'm working with all the departments to make sure that we have our budget. What we need to do is, though, if I'm correct, we're not going to, we got to make some decisions on some of the money that we have available. There's not going to be very much money available. Tomorrow, I'm going to be meeting my staff, because, am I correct in saying somewhere around 1.6 that we can make decisions on?
1.7.
Uh, 1.7, so that's where we need your help. I'm going to meet with my team, and I'm going to say to the board, maybe on that 1.7, one of the goals, one of the things that you said you wanted to improve in our district, it says, you want to create a budget that will support technology implementation throughout the district. So when I meet with my team, I'm going to say, how much do we need to really do this, to make sure that we can make the governing board's goal come, come true? So we may put like, .5 million into that account, and that's going to take some of the 1.7. I'm going to keep going with other items, like, for example, you know, we're, we're in turnaround, so how much money do we need to put into turnaround for professional development and things like that for our teachers? So I'm going to recommend maybe another percentage there, could be 300,000, whatever, but we will give you a recommendation, because we're going to be meeting tomorrow. But after that, we need you to look at, at those figures, and see if you want to alter them, or if they match, but I think we just need to start making some decisions on pretty quick, because we don't have too many more meetings on budget, am I correct? So we've got to move forward.
There's really one more, and I've got to present you a draft, and so...
So...
We're running out of time without adding more time at this point.
Right. So we'll be meeting tomorrow, when I, my staff, I'll give you a recommendation of where we feel monies need to be there for us to reach what you want.
Is that 1.7 district-wide?
It's in the general fund, yep, so...
And we need to...
Yeah, so that would be any salaries and benefit packages that we're negotiating, it would be Chromebook implementation, it would be turnaround PD, and I shared with you, I think, last week, that list. We were able to eliminate some things off that list, but it's still a healthy list.
Excuse me, if I'm not mistaken, this period of time last year, this board had at least seven budget meetings, now we only had two, and this is 45 minutes, then the last one last week, I didn't make it to, which I apologize, was two hours. So I'm trying to figure out, you're trying to give us some money in our face, and say, go up or down, if we need it, if we don't need it, with 1.7 million, you're saying this what we need to do, which I respect that, but my question to you is, it should be up or down, if, how many percentage did this, did this program go up? Why are we estimating that we should do this? 1% or 2%? We're not getting no, as far as I'm concerned, no, no technicality of why something should go up a percent, 2%, 3%. We're not getting them numbers. All we getting is, is 20,000 for this, 23,000 for that. Why is it 23,000 if it was 20,000? How many students are you anticipating next year?
Um, I think, right, and we, and I don't have it off the top of my head, we unfortunately did discuss that last week, so...
So do nobody know, as of today, how many students are we estimating?
Yeah, I do, I have it, I just, I have to look it up, I just can't spit it out.
All that has been projected, Mr. Thomas, and all I'm saying is, though, we need to start making some decisions, because...
Right, but if we're going to make some decision, and you're just telling us that we got one meeting, one more meeting for the budget, that's unsatisfactory. So we, as a board, we can decide if we want a meeting tomorrow, which if we can't have it tomorrow, it's got to be posted within 24 hours.
That is correct.
So we can have a meeting Friday, we can have a meeting almost every day.
I think the board chose...
At the end, we're having a communication discussion, we're going to discuss how we're going to run the next board meeting, and that could be something that we could look at, is have more budget discussion at that time. So we could bring, we could bring that all back up at, at that time, if that's okay.
Yes.
Harvest, to answer your question, we're projecting 7,123.1 student FTE next year, compared to 7,125.8. So I was going to say three, but just a little less than three is the difference from this year to next. And that's, that's all I have for tonight, and as you have your conversation, we can definitely add more meetings, based on your dialogue. Harvest, it was the board's wish to talk tonight, and to try to do these at board meetings, which is why I was pointing out you might need to add some.
Okay, Sandy, thanks.
You're welcome.
We've got about four minutes.